Call this meeting to order. This is the Commissioner meeting of March 22nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is taking place at the Sussex County Administrator Center in the Commissioner Room at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Door call, please.
Director Carney.
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Hayden.
Here.
Commissioner Space.
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley.
Here.
Number three is a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. Our moment of silence today is for Judge Ken Forty. He's been a longtime judge here in Sussex County when he passed away over the weekend. So if we got a moment of silence and then a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four is our public statement pursuant to the Oakland Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, at a quick notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, with such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger. And is also posted on the Voluntab Board Maintaining an Administrative Center for Public Announcements has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk and compliance with SED Act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Space, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, carries. Number six proclamation certificates and presentations. We do have one. This is recognizing March 19-25 Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week. Tammy Cudensias?
Cudensias.
I'm sorry.
No.
Is attending to accept the proclamation. And I'm sorry, we have two. Recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, Herb will be attending the April 1st event and present the proclamation here with Christine Florio. Commissioner Space is can?
Uh, no, Commissioner.
Commissioner Fantasia is going to read proclamation?
This is the multiple sclerosis.
Yes.
Whereas multiple sclerosis is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting 2.3 million people worldwide, and whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, New Jersey Chapter, reports that in our state, more than 14,000 people are living with MS, and that the disease generally strikes people in their prime of life, between ages 20 through 50, and the cause and course of the often debilitating symptoms of MS remain unknown and no cure currently exists. And whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been committed for 73 years to a world free of MS, heightened public knowledge about and insight into the disease. And whereas since 1946, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force of MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatments, and a cure, and has invested more than $1 billion in groundbreaking research. And whereas funds raised through the National Multiple Sclerosis Society fuel 34 million funding, 320 research projects at the best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the U.S. and abroad, leading to many breakthroughs in the treatment of MS. And whereas stopping MS in its tracks, restoring what has been lost, and ending MS forever is the mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, and one that all Americans and New Jerseyans should support. Whereas the County of Sussex, New Jersey, recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS, and expresses its appreciation for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, New Jersey Chapter, has shown toward creating a world free of MS. And now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of Chosen Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the Constitution and laws of the great state of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim March 19th through the 25th, 2023, as MS Awareness Week, and do commend the observance to all of our citizens. We encourage all New Jerseyans to learn more about multiple sclerosis and what they can do to support individuals with MS and their families. By order of the Board of County Commissioners, Chris Carney, Commissioner Director, Herb Yardley, Deputy Director, and John Fantasia, Jill Space, and William Hayden, County Commissioners.
Is there anything you would like to say, Tammy?
Um, I could just share two really quick stories. So, um, out of the 14, 14 to 20 years that I've been living with MS, I've been an MS advocate. And just two weeks ago, I had the privilege to go to Washington DC for a public policy conference. And, and two stories from that trip come struck in me, and I just wanted to take a moment to share with you, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, the first night of the conference, myself and two of my friends were getting on the elevator to go back to our rooms after our full day of policy prep. And I got on the elevator and pushed the whole door button as one of my friends was using a rollator. And this guy jumps on the elevator and he's waiting there a few seconds. He actually leans out and says, can you hurry up? We're holding the elevator for you, to my friend with a rollator. So there were a few Jersey exchanges, a few words that took place, but I moved on from that. The second day of our policy prep, we learned that the American with Disabilities Act, the very act that's intended to protect people living with disabilities, does not apply to air travel. And we heard the most horrendous stories of how people living with disabilities and their, their very expensive custom devices that are extensions of their bodies and help them, you know, function in the world. Just terrible stories of how they were treated while traveling by air. And it was just absolutely appalling to me. So, you know, it makes me think, you know, how do we, first off, these are not just MS issues, right? These are, these are societal issues. They're not just, just limited to people living with MS. You know, how do we, how do we go from attitudes of ignorance at, at the worst or disregard? You know, how do we change those attitudes to compassion and tolerance? You know, how do we change access and laws and perceptions for everyone? And we do that through, we do that through opening the door. We do that through education.
No Jersey exchanges.
No Jersey exchanges. That's what he's coming. See, I'm a nice person. I meant to be nice to this guy, but, but we do that through education and through raising awareness. And that's why I am so grateful to our commissioners and, and everyone here in attendance for recognizing MS Awareness Week. That's how we change these attitudes. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Did you want to take a quick?
Yeah.
Quick photo, Tammy? Is that all right?
Oh, may I? Can somebody snap it?
No, I don't think that.
Do you mind? Yeah. Oh, in front of the flag is great. Thanks. Look, the green and orange looks great. It's like we coordinated. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, guys.
And thanks, Herb, for attending the April 1st. Appreciate that. Number seven is our public hearing. There is none. Number eight is a public session from the floor. This public session, for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item, please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. I get a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, second. Commissioner Hayden, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, pass. Anyone from the public that would like to come up? Just come up to the microphone, whoever wants to come first, say your name and municipality. Is that?
Hey.
Is that, oh, the holder?
Yeah.
The holder's broke, yeah.
Gotcha. Sorry.
Everything walking around.
Something with you.
I've got a question, a resolution 14, please. Which I am in favor of. I'm not aware of the bill, Senate bill, I assume it was sponsored by the Republican Party.
Yes, actually, it was sponsored by Doug Steinhardt, our attorney.
Oh. Obviously, I haven't seen the bill, but it says, in support of Senate Bill S 3534 restricting all ownership of agricultural land in state by foreign business persons. I assume the bill says more than that. How about entities, businesses? I'd like.
Do we have that with us? We must like that.
Um, well.
The verbiage was to cover entities.
Yeah, persons actually covers entities, corporations, LLCs, and so forth. It's not just an individual person.
I'd rather go further. I'm old enough to remember when Saudi Arabia, when they nationalized all the oil fields and threw our companies that had done all the building and all the building, basically threw them out. As far as I know, there was no compensation. Throw them out.
Well, what I can say is we're not.
It's illegal in the state of New Jersey for any foreigner to own any property, any real estate property, and as of January 1st, 2024, all such property will be confiscated without a public option.
What I can say was, I'm starting to throw up your dinner. Yeah, so, so this is a resolution to go to the governor. As you know, he doesn't listen to us ever. I think we've, we've been up here for a long time and saying the same thing. We want them to, we want everybody to be heard, what our constituents want, just like yourself, want to be heard. So that's our letter to him. This will be sent all over. Our legislators, you know, they take care a little bit more than us. Feel free to reach out to District 24. They're probably on board. I can't imagine they're not. But this was important to, to us as a board to back legislators who came up with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize, sir. Can we just restate your municipality?
Feel free to come up.
That don't work.
That doesn't work either. You're trying, Ed.
My name is Ed Sabo. I live in Stow Water. The reason I'm here this evening is that when I see resolutions A through M, we're talking about a ton of money, a real ton of money in the aggregate. And one of the things that I'm really concerned about is that there's a movement on nationally, and I'm sure you're all aware about it, aware of it, and that is the initials ESG with environmental, with social and governance, and the way money is, is being accumulated and then eventually spent. And what it really means, I think, in my own terms, is that we have a lot of public money that we're spending on all these resolutions, and I don't question how good or bad an idea any of them are. But what I'm concerned about is as the county accumulates all of the money that they require for their budgeting and for their spending, it would be a doggone shame to think you would limit the monies that are being spent and that are being invested. If all of that money had to fit under that pseudonym of ESG, then I'm saying to myself, I always felt that the money that was accumulated was put in a bank, was put into securities, was put into investments. And to my way of thinking, any money that's invested that happens to belong to me, I want to maximize the profit from it. And I would certainly hope that you folks are in the same school and that, that you feel that way too, so that there's a minimum of public money that would be spent in any other direction, and we're, we're all on the same, same team, basically. So this ESG movement that's going on is something relatively new to most of us, and I just heard recently that in Warren County, just as an example, they passed a resolution at the county level that any money that's being invested, that's been accumulated from the public funds, any of that money should definitely not go to these ESG organizations that are going to skim off the top. And so I would hope you might consider checking out what Warren County has done with your respective counterparts, do a little homework on it, and see if what they have done makes sense, and perhaps you might want to adopt the same kind of attitude and make sure that our invested money is getting the most bucks for the, for the investment. Is there any question?
No, appreciate your comment. Thank you.
I don't listen.
Is there anybody else on agenda topics only?
Anyone else?
Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second. Commissioner Space, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, carries. Number nine is Commissioners Com, Commissioners Comments. We'll start with Commissioner Hayden.
All right. First one is on SCUMA. SCUMA for the last 12 years has kept their rates flat. They're going up a very slim amount. Three cents per pound for household waste, thirteen, $11 per ton, which is a good thing that that over 12 years, that's all it's gone up, but fortunately them, like everybody else, they have to pass the cost of doing business on, especially with all the upgrades they've done to make that dumpster viable for a longer duration. The Sussex County Library System is now making thousands of newspapers and magazine titles available online, uh, which is a good thing if you like to read the monthly and weekly publications, you can go to SussexCountyLibrary.org, digital newsstand, and you can go there to peruse your local periodicals that you'd like to use. On the healthcare issue, we have more calls from retirees, and I'm happy the Horizon has confirmed three dates, but they weren't here in the last week, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And that's a problem, and you're going to bring that up. So we are still working on that, on the retirees. On the website, the dates for Horizon will be there. Supposedly they'll be here tomorrow, March 23rd, April 13th, and May 11th. And I'm always available, as any of the commissioners are, to any of the retirees, and I think you're going to talk more about that.
Yep.
And that, and I think that's all until New Business has some other stuff.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Space.
Division of Senior Services, Sussex County Veterans Appreciation Luncheon. The Sussex County Division of Senior Services is hosting an appreciation luncheon in honor of our Sussex County veterans. This special event will be held on Wednesday, April 26, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Farmstead Golf and Country Club located at 88 Lawrence Road in Lafayette, New Jersey. The luncheon will include presentations from various veteran organizations, information tables, and giveaways. Pre-registration for this event is required by April 14, 2023. For additional information and to RSVP for the luncheon, please contact the Sussex County Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1277, or email seniorservices@sussex nj.us. And I'm very pleased and want to thank Lorraine Hens because she always puts our veterans in this county first. So, thank you, Lorraine, and your whole team for doing such a good job all the time. Eighth Annual Backpack Snack for Kids surpasses last year's record. The Eighth Annual Backpack Snacks for Kids Food Drive was held this Saturday, March 18th, 2023, at the Weiss Markets in Franklin and Newton. The Sussex County community was extremely generous again this year. Over 8,000 pounds of food and $1,650 in monetary donations were collected during this year's drive, exceeding last year's collection. The Backpack Snacks for Kids program provides Sussex County children with meals and snacks for the weekend and during school breaks. Donations from the Backpack Snacks for Kids Food Drive go directly to Sussex County children in need. If anyone is in need of food for themselves or their family, they can stop by the Division of Social Services, which is located at 83 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, from 8:30 to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. Food or pet donations are accepted during these hours, or special arrangements can be made for after-hours donations by calling 973-383-3600. And I would like to congratulate the town of Newton and the Fire Department for the St. Patrick's Day Parade that all five of us commissioners had the honor of marching in, and it was extremely well turned, uh, well, there was an extremely well turnout, and it was very well organized. So I'm glad to see that back in action after a three-year hiatus, I think. And on a personal preference, I attended the One H First Aid Squad Dinner on Saturday night, and I have to be a proud mom for a minute. My son got his very first CPR SAVE Award, so very pleased to say that, you know. So anyway, we, without our first responders, we wouldn't have anything here in the county. You know, we would be paying for it, and I saw Herb also attended a Fire Department Dinner this weekend too. So this, this board, we really appreciate our first responders. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Space. Commissioner Fantasia?
Okay. Although I'm not the liaison to the Ag Board, I don't want to steal your thunder here, so I'll be brief with the Ag Board. Today, Happy National Agriculture Day. It's a big day up here in these parts. Sussex County, we have 565 square miles here, and we are homes to over 1,000 farms here in Sussex County across our 24 municipalities. Nearly one in 10 farms in the state of New Jersey are located right here in Sussex County, and we supply livestock, poultry, eggs, produce, dairy, trees, honey, flowers, and the list goes on and on. Our very own Sussex County Agricultural Development Board has preserved more than 180 farms and over 17,500 acres of farmland here in Sussex County. So if you'd like to learn more about agriculture in Sussex County, you could visit our website, and they have a page, our agricultural board has a page. So interesting day, good day to celebrate here what, what we do love. Commissioner Yardley and I attended a Board of School Estimate Meeting along with Commissioner Carney for the college. We actually reviewed again the projects that the college were doing. I like the direction that the college is going in by focusing on needs versus wants, and a lot of the programs that they are doing are research-based and have provided a return and kept enrollment steady. If you remember, last year, we were the only county college in the state to have increased enrollment, and it was minor. It was at about a 2% increase, but we'll take it, where other counties were losing enrollment in their county college. So that was a successful meeting there. We had the pleasure as a board of going around and visiting some of our local businesses to distribute. As we had discussed, we received our first round of ARPA checks to visit and deliver. I had the honor of going to a local gymnastics studio. Commissioner Carney, he visited a diner, Fisher Space, it was some aesthetic studio, nail studio. Commissioner Yardley went to Hopeakong. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if Commissioner Hayden went, but we went and we passed out, you know, and got to actually meet, you know, some of, some of the business owners and, and see that firsthand. You know, people have struggled with the pandemic, and it's no secret that this board has complained a long time that we were underfunded and struggled under the Murphy and Biden draconian policies of lockdown during the pandemic. And a lot of the directives, we feel, were unconstitutional and heavy-handed, and we pay too much in taxes as it is, and our little corner of New Jersey gets passed over for state and federal support all the time. We saw that happen with the first round of CARES funding, where we were one of 12 counties passed over, then we were one of four counties that were passed over. So in my opinion, instead of, you know, sitting on the $10 billion of federal aid that, that the Biden administration, you know, is distributed to our governor and sitting on it and not distributing it, when we get it, it is important that we put it in the hands of those who have suffered the most. So it was honestly a moment for those businesses, the moment wasn't about us, it was a moment for those businesses to get ever-so-slight vindication for what they went through and what they suffered, and I wish it was more, and it should be more. And we still have a fair amount of funds available. The portal is open for small businesses to apply for a grant up to $15,000. It is the least that the federal government can do in, in light of what was done to our businesses in New Jersey.
To your point, Commissioner, I'll update in my report all the numbers that have gone out in total, so that we can communicate that as well.
That's perfect. That's perfect. Thank you very much. Again, attending the Newton-St. Patrick's Day Parade was wonderful. It was packed. It was a sea of green. We embraced our Irish heritage. Most of us have either a smidgen or, or half, you know, or maybe even full. Tons of green going on, on the street, people of all ages, pets, horses, with little costumes on, and it was probably the most robustly attended parade that I've seen, you know, since, since COVID. It was a beautiful day, and it was nice to see all the community groups out. I mean, it was such a wide cross-section of people, volunteer organizations, rescue squads. It was great. So that's one of my favorite activities to do, and all five of us were able to participate in that, and it was great. And I'll finish off tonight with, actually, not finish off, but I'll go to this, and then I just have a tiny little thing about school funding, which I won't drag on and on tonight because I did last week. As far as my health department report tonight, as always, the Office of Public Health Nursing continues to offer COVID booster shots for those who happen to be interested at the Office of Public Health Nursing in Meatsworth Road in Hamburg on Wednesday, April 12th, from 3:00 to 5:00, and Wednesday, April 26th, from 3:00 to 5:00 as well. Public Health Nursing continues to provide weekly homebound vaccinations as well, and if you would like a free at-home COVID-19 test kit, the County of Sussex works with Vault, and you can log online and have one of those tests delivered to you for free. Most recent numbers, we're in a very low activity of COVID here, and I always like to share with you the hospitalizations, just to kind of give you an idea of where we're landing. In March thus far, we've had nine hospitalizations. In contrast, February, we had 39, January 76, December 66. So you see, as the weather's getting warmer, it's a downward trend. Now, in the very start of the year this year, I started asking for reports on flu and RSV because RSV was affecting children and babies specifically, and flu was hitting our schools really quickly. We all know the flu magically disappeared somehow during the COVID era, and then it just kind of came back with a vengeance, so you draw your own conclusion there, but I will give you the flu updates here. We are considered in this area, as of now, at a low activity for flu, which is very, very nice to hear. New Jersey does have a little bit of an increase of emergency room visits compared to our neighbors and compared to last year as well. The good news is, again, I am so happy to report, this is going to be the third consecutive report, that I've said that in Sussex County, outbreaks of flu and RSV in the younger population, we have zero RSV outbreaks in schools and daycares, zero RSV in long-term care facilities, we have zero influenza A outbreaks in schools, and zero influenza A in long-term care facilities. So our infection control measures are working, and those numbers are down, and it's great to hear that our infants are most vulnerable, our seniors, our veterans in assisted living facilities seem to be weathering pretty well at this point, which is a very good thing to hear. I just will briefly touch base at our last meeting. We were quite incensed at the amount of school funding cuts that Sussex County received. We're at the very bottom of the barrel, some districts losing over half a million dollars, some losing 22% to 28% of their state funding for school. We all know school funding is the largest portion of your overall tax bill. So there was an 11th-hour agreement for a restoration of $102 million to 2/3 to restore 66% of what was taken away to 150 districts. That could be a significant impact if it really did help a fair amount of our districts, but again, it was but a drop in the bucket for a couple of our larger districts. The frustrating part was that the GOP proposed a plan, the GOP Assembly proposed a plan to fully fund 100% of the lost aid and fully fund every single school in the state of New Jersey. That plan was not even taken under consideration. This was another plan that came out that is milquetoast to me and still kicks a fair amount of our districts and our county in the teeth. So we'll keep you posted on what those numbers look like and how that develops, but wasn't necessarily fabulous news for our schools here in Sussex County, which was a surprise. Thank you.
Thank you. Fantasia, deputy director?
Tonight, I wanted to just say we had a great day, happy parade, and I turned around while we were walking and looked at the tractor, and I remembered, I don't remember what year it was, but Parker, in the middle of a snowstorm, drove his, Parker Space, drove his tractor down from the farm. And, and I started. And I started the snow after the parade, and it got cold. And I said, oh, do you have a trailer to put then? He goes, no, I have to drive it home. And I just pictured him covered in ice, stuck to the steering wheel. I don't remember what year that was, but I do remember the event. And I was like, oh my God. I noticed he had no tractor.
I was happy he didn't bring the tractor this time.
I was at the Stillwater Fire Department Installation Dinner Saturday night, and they inducted five new firemen that finished the course, and that's a 100-hour course. And so when you're a volunteer fire department, you have people, jobs and whatever, and they make the time to go do those courses. And I think it's a wonderful thing all of our volunteers do. And it actually saves the county money. So we may be paying at times to have to buy a fire truck or something, but you don't have to pay for a full-time fire department with a lot of volunteers. So very lucky in that respect. I did attend the March Meals for Wheels, uh, March Meal Celebration on the 21st at 10:00 a.m. And that was event, they had a little breakfast, it's really coffee and some donuts and stuff. And you get an opportunity to deliver a meal to, as a volunteer, to a senior or someone in need. And the Meals on Wheels program proudly provides hot, nutritional-balanced meals to residents of Sussex County who are 60 and older, homebound, isolated, and unable to prepare meals independently. And it's a combination of many volunteers and workers. And they support the local community and give back to one of our greatest generations right here in our backyards. And I want to say, I did have the opportunity to deliver a meal to a fellow by the name of Joe. And Joe is blind. And you really get to see when you volunteer, and this is open to anybody. And if you have an opportunity to visit and deliver a meal, you really get to see the need that people have. And I think sometimes you hear stories where people take a view of, you know, giving all this food away. It's really to those people that need it. And so I was very proud to do that. And I want to say, I'm not going to give you his last name, but Joe was very appreciative and a very nice guy. And everybody was there. I also learned that the pro, met a woman that was involved in starting that program over 50 years ago. So that's a program that comes out of the county, and it's in conjunction with Catholic charities. And the meals are prepared at the hospital. Okay, there's, there's the Office of Public Health Nursing. They have two clinics. One is a child health clinic held on Tuesday, March 28th from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Office of Public Health Nursing. And also that day, they have a health check clinic on the 28th, and that's from 2:00 to 4:00. And that's open for adults and school-aged children. There's no fee for vaccinations if you're underinsured or uninsured. The clinic also offers a variety of health screenings. So if you need to make an appointment, you can call Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. April 13th, there's a women's clinic. That's also the 973-579-0570, extension 1246. And as I'm talking about these things, if you know anyone, please let them know. They can go out to our website to find these things. Just environmental inspections, there were 159 inspections from January through February, one month, two months. 148 food inspections, seven animal facilities, six tanning facilities, 41 temporary food plans, and six fixed food plans. And that's good because that's usually showing that we're getting some new businesses in. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. I have a few items with engineering and planning, the Sussex County Division of Planning and Economic Development. Project is site planning subdivision review, milestone achievement. Staff from the Sussex County Division of Planning provide technical assistance to the county planning board and development review committee. Waiver requests concerning land development standards are considered by the full planning board. The substantial investment of staff time continues to be required. Milestone status for this project, field meetings with Department of Engineering Planning, staff for four. New applications were held, staff measured site distances. Actually, I ran into them on their way out. Rebooting existing and proposed site access and drainage. Waiver requests from the SCPB review and approval. Two applications reviewed by staff to development review committee for approval. Mr. Hayden, you probably saw that properly, or you will see that soon. Sussex County DPW, project dead and diseased tree removal. As everybody knows, the ash trees have been crazy in New Jersey due to the beetle. So Midhurst Tree Care has completed their contracted tree work on County Route 515 in Vernon Township. Midhurst was able to remove a total of 174 dead and diseased trees. Very, very expensive bug. The drift is bad. And that project was a failed pipe replacement. Milestone achievement on that is county crews worked to replace failed corrugated metal pipe, or CMP, on County Route 602, Brooklyn Road in Stanhope Township. This work was completed in a single day within an existing road closure. And Sussex County Division of Engineering Project, annual stormwater inlet inspection migration into City Works Asset Management System, or AMS. Another statute with no funding.
Yeah, unfunded mandate.
This is hurting everybody around the county, all, I know there's some mayors here, a couple mayors here at least, that will be dealing with this at the municipalities. It's going to be very expensive, another mandate that our people in Trenton decide to put on us. Department of Engineering Plan is responsible for inspecting, cleaning, and maintenance related to county-owned and maintained stormwater inlet infrastructure. Inlet inspections are currently underway with the Division of Public Works. Status on this is annual stormwater inlet inspections issued for approximately 4,090 inlets operated by the county. That is a lot of inlets. DPW crews actively completing inspections and 68% complete. That's impressive, very good. Engineering staff generating corresponding cleaning or repair work orders based off inspection data. Crews to complete inlet cleaning and complete repairs and maintenance. I do want to report that I expected a rep here from Horizon here tonight to explain further delays that we've been having. I want to ask County Council after draft, about drafting a letter to Horizon expressing dissatisfaction from the board regarding this continued insurance issues. As an update to everyone, Horizon will be here all day tomorrow, as Commissioner Hayden said earlier, the 23rd, beginning at 8:30, again on the 13th and May 11th. While it's great they are going to be in the building to assist employees and retirees, and it's unacceptable. And we need to go through these lines because the insurance is not working the way we realized. As a board, I want to apologize for any inconvenience, and we do everything we can not to let anything like this happen again. If there's anyone here that wants to speak about this matter, please feel free to come up at our next public session. Otherwise, we ask everyone to continue to call and email us with any issues, and we'll make sure that you're heard. I got to be honest with you, I'm not one for patience at all. And when you look me in the face and in the eye and say that you're going to be here, and you don't, that's a problem. I think everybody up on this board has a problem with that. And we were told two weeks ago that a rep from Horizon was going to be here and start our meetings with everybody. And we have Rayanne that works for us that has been taking a lot of calls, and Debbie Funky as well, helping our retirees out. But that's not their job. That's not what they should be doing all day. That's taking away their time and effort. So I'm real upset about that. And again, somebody who has negative patience, one of my faults, one of them, pretty mad, pretty mad.
Mr. Carney, can I ask a question?
Sure.
In that meeting, I had asked, and I know Doug Steinhardt was here, I know Katie's here tonight, if we could look into the possibility of whether they were in breach of contract to the county. So I'm going to ask if Katie can follow up with Doug's research on that piece?
And we are looking into that.
Because I believe, I mean, this is just extra salt in the wound now.
Yep.
I think that it 100% warrants that. It's outrageous.
Agreed. And I'll refrain from using the Jersey words.
Let me just ask real quick, has anybody received a second or third bill for a bill that you received in March? I just received two new bills that they, that I was told would be paid.
And was told to throw the first one away, right?
So I did that, like, you know, I said, okay, I'm going to throw those away. And I got new ones. And I actually called, and they said, I'm responsible. And no one has told them that they're going to be paid. And so I'm going to just, I'm sure there's other people that are not.
There are.
That are in the same spot.
Well, before we get too carried away, I know Rayanne's going to talk out of public here. But again, you're always here, Herb, you're here pretty much every day. You should stop in and talk to.
Anna, is her name?
Anna. If anybody's here for that purpose, come tomorrow, give your two cents, give us your two cents. Not happy, really, really not happy. And what I'm going to ask the board today as well is our agent to get us our insurance. I like to put that out for RFP, so that'll be something that I'm going to ask of you guys tonight.
So maybe we can get somebody who's going to push for a different insurance policy holder, because I'm just done with everybody.
In this contract, we have to have some kind of penalties written in.
Yeah.
We got to sharpen our pencils.
Going forward, you know, as a whole, we'll take responsibility. But we're doing the best that we can to make sure that everybody who worked here and is retired or works here gets their health coverage, because that's what they deserve, right? I think so.
And to your point, Commissioner, that the employees that are dealing with us want to help the retirees, they do, they live for that. But most certainly shouldn't be the norm, by no means.
So sorry for getting upset, it just gets me real aggravated when you look me in the eye and tell me you're going to be here and you don't. It's disrespectful, and I don't appreciate it. Moving on, too upset. Is approval of consentogenic? Can I get a motion?
There's no consentogenic.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Approval minutes. See, I'm a little upset, a little upset.
Sean Garrett says voice vote. That's why you're not trying to give us a voice vote.
I'm thinking if I swore or not, said Jersey words.
You're not wrong.
Number level 11 is approval of minutes. This is from our regular meeting, March 8th of 2023. I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting. So moved. Commissioner Hayden, can I have a second? Commissioner Space, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stay. Number 12 is ordinance, there is none. Number 13 is appointments and/or resignations, we have one. It's acknowledging appointment of Paul G. Mole as a member of the Sussex County Community College Search Committee by the county administrator. I have a motion to accept the resolution.
So moved.
Commissioner Space, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner, regarding, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Stay. 14. Resolution A through P, now the motion to adopt resolutions A through P.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second. I will second that. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner, Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Number 15, awards of contract change orders and bids, we have one. Awarding contract through the competitive contracting process to Labor Council for the County of Sussex, DeFolio, Bucci, Steinhardt, Capelli, Tipton, and Taylor LLC on March 22nd, 2023 through March 23rd, 2024. Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders, bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determine the adoption of the said resolutions is and will further the public's interest. An emotion to adopt resolutions A.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Space, second from Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Number 16 is financial, payment of bills list from March 22nd, 2023. I have a motion to pay the bills list.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Space, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Number 17 is personnel, there is none. Number 18, administrative report, Ron, you are.
Thank you. To continue on the ARPA conversation, we've had, we've awarded $342,000. That was either personally delivered by the commissioners and/or mailed to this point. We approved another 10 applications this week, where that will result in approximately another $125,000 that were going out. If all the applications that are in the system right now, that are still in the either need documents or need something, but they, they look like they meet the eligibility of it, we'll be distributing right at $939,000. It's 81 applications that's in the queue that seem to be meeting all the eligibility, but they don't have like their VRC yet, or they don't have some document that they got to get into the system. So it is progressing very well, I think. To date, we've had 203 applications created. And that means a business went in and created an application, but didn't do anything with it, just created it. We've had 106 submitted, we've had 81 approved, and we've had 24 denied. So in those denials, they can go back, they can go back, they can appeal, they can appeal. But these, so far, we have two that's been strongly denied, but for whatever reason. They didn't meet the eligibility, the cost didn't make, or the expenses didn't make. They didn't have all their documentation, whatever, there's a whole host of issues that they would have been denied by.
I have a question. If a business is denied and it gets kicked back, do you, like you said, there was 24, but two were hard denials per se? The others could be for missing documents or needing to submit additional information?
And also, for businesses that didn't, for some reason, have all their documentation in their first application to get to the total of 15,000, but they did have the expenses, they just got to get their act together, they can always apply again to get to the top of the 15,000. It costs nothing to put that application in, it's just the process of doing it. So we had one agency that only got like $700, went back and got all their information back. Now they're going to get another $10,000, $11,000 out of it, but they had to apply twice.
You know what's good as well? I know of Havis Thighard, Hardeston used to be one of my towns for liaison. The mayor saw our posts about the grants. And thank you to Christina and you for putting together the list for him of the towns in Hamburg and Hardeston that have applied. Because I feel like once that's out, I know Hope Pat Kong, I know Councilman Smith is here. But Hope Pat Kong was very, very good, their mayor and council, about getting the word out. And it seems like with more awareness, it's starting to spread.
It is.
So Mayor Kaminsky asked for the list, you got it to him within 24 hours. And then he started putting boots on the ground to get the word out. It's so important, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to go back to that, too, the whole point of us making the paper, even though I didn't know we were in the paper until people came out to be more appreciative and wondering how they can do that, was giving this money out and letting everybody know that we're doing this. Not many people trust politicians, so when you say something, they're not so keen to believe in that. But if you actually read about it and see people actually getting those shows, it makes a big difference. And we've turned up the notch, we've turned up the heat, and people are coming in and taking advantage of it. Like you said, Mayor Francis, and I know the other, some other municipalities are really pushing for it. It's not going to save free money, because you never save free money, sooner or later, we're going to pay for it. But it makes you feel good helping somebody out, it really does.
I can say, in the 20 years I've been in county government, it's the most oddest and happiest time to deliver to a company that's, or a business that's been hurt by this whole pandemic thing with no strings attached. It's a real strange environment to be able to do that. It's one in a lifetime, as far as I'm concerned. But thanks.
Could you talk a little bit about the fire departments and who they do?
Yeah, in the ARPA monies, there are, we've allotted monies to each fire department in the county. I think it's 41, 10,000 per? EMS, right, volunteer EMS in fire. So we've offered up $10,000 for that. Elka has finished out the application process for that. That's going to be on the web that they can go on. And basically, what they have to do is show that they were in a negative effect by either fundraising or not being able to have events because of COVID. A lot of the firehouses rent out their facilities for events, and they couldn't do that. A lot of them had, you know, donations that they couldn't do. More donations were done by the boot drivers than anything that I saw. There wasn't anything they could come to the building and do because we were so restrictive on it. So that's available, that'll be, that'll go live soon. And we've already had one request from the fire department, what they do, they have to tell us what they want. We have to get their quotes on the materials they have. And then the county ultimately will buy that through our purchasing system so that we accurately know it's done under the purchasing law and meets all the coordinates of the grant.
Right, we can control the spending, per se.
Yeah. And that leads me to my next, just real quick update. We had our first quarter JIF meeting this quarter, uh, JIF meeting this, or risk management meeting, uh, last week, and I'm happy to announce that the county did very well the first quarter. I won't go into any general liability claims and all that, but from a worker's comp perspective, we had thirteen claims through the quarter, nine of them were report only, two was a, a medical treat, went back to work, and we had two lost days that were only one day each. So we had a very stellar, our employees are very, 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 particularly our workers, are very, very stellar, our facilities group are very stellar about approaching the work zones in a safe manner, and it reflects in our numbers. That being said, we were able to apply for the grant this year that will get somewhere about twenty-four thousand dollars back from our premiums, so that, we've made that grant application this week, that was due April, April first to the JIF, they'll sort those out, and we should receive a check for twenty-four grand based on our premiums, our experiences with our premiums. Um, real lastly, next week, I've been asked to speak at the Rotary Club, uh, of Newton to talk about ARPA monies, uh, to talk to that group about the communications on ARPA money, so I volunteered to do that. And then lastly, Tammy, thank you for all you do. There's a lot of us in this room that deals with that. My father-in-law had EMS for forty-five years, and so, no, thank you for everything you do. That's it?
Sir?
All right, thank you. Uh, eighteen, county council report, do you have anything?
Um, no. Not for yours, I have no.
All right, nineteen, unfinished business, any, Commissioner, have any, anything that we... unfinished? No. All right, new business, I believe, Commissioner Hayden has...
I have two things.
Two things, all right.
So the SCUMA, they're, uh, looking to give a thousand per employee as a bonus, a sign-on bonus, if you, you know, I think we really need to look at why they're doing that, and it will affect us here. I don't think that'll work out good with employees, they'll be upset by they're not getting it, there'll be a revolt. The other thing is their auditor, they're supposedly behind, they've reappointed, we need to ask them to look into that as well. Uh, and that's what I have for SCUMA. The other thing kinda backs up what Mr. Sabo brought up earlier, uh, ESG, I think we need to do the resolution, uh, like Warren did, Trump, DeSantis, the House of Representatives have all come out against it. The House of Representatives came up with a bill Biden vetoed. Um, this is a way of controlling our monetary system, this is a way of creating, much like the Chinese have the social credit system, and I don't, I think it doesn't end well for us, so I think, I have a copy of the resolution, I'll give it to the clerk, and I think we need to put that on the agenda.
I just wanna go back to SCUMA thing, because as a director, I have to sign off, as, well, you guys have been directors, we sign off on SCUMA. So it's a little odd for me when you say no, cause they're, they're, they act as their own entity, for people who don't know that. Um, but we initially, well, we, at the end of the day, we, we sign off on what they spend and whatnot. I believe we have ten days before I...
Ten days after a meeting, um, to approve those pending action reports. If no action is taken, they're automatically approved.
Right, yes. So that's what we're gonna have to do. So Bill's basically asking to take a look at this, and I think you, you've left something out. It was a thousand, I believe, for the new employee?
Right.
A thousand for the recommendation, so...
See, I didn't know about the recommend, I knew it was a thousand for the new employee.
I'm correct on that, right Christina?
Um, I'd have to go back and trouble check, but I think it's one of, I think...
I believe it's one and one, nevertheless, it's, that's two thousand dollars, yes. So nevertheless, we just need to get on this, and Christina will follow up and see where we wanna go, uh, before I go. I'll, I'll hold, hold tight here and not, you know, sign off on anything.
Cause the pass reports, I mean, they come through to the director.
Correct.
So, you know, if it's, nothing is caught or, or brought to the attention of the board, so how do we go about advice or, or counsel by not making a quorum, because these things don't normally come to a quorum?
I, I think, I'm sorry to cut you off, what I was talking to Commissioner Hayden about, I think he, uh, no, no offense, by all means, just, I think we need to stay up on it a little bit more, that's all, you know what I mean? I lacked a little bit last year myself, not going to SCUMA meetings, cause we, you know, we have, we appoint those people.
Is it on the pass report this time?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so, and it's not always easy to catch that stuff, I'm glad we did catch it. So I think we're just gonna have to, you know, pay a little bit more attention, you know, to that. I'm not looking to micromanage anybody, not, you know, me personally, I don't, I don't do that, but it would, if it comes back to us, then it causes a big problem that, you know, we need to take a look at as well.
And then, uh, so, I don't know, do we need a motion on that?
No, no, I think we need to look at it, everybody needs to look at it a little time before we, we pull the trigger on that.
Yeah, we would just have to...
And I, we gotta make, right, correct, and I gotta make sure that we are right with the thousand, the thousand.
Yeah, cause I don't remember.
Well, we can just go back and ask them to clarify, we can ask for additional information, we can tell them the board has met.
Right.
I'm requesting additional, what they'll do is they'll veto those particular pending action reports, provide the board with some additional information to review, and then they can always reintroduce.
Right, there might be a reason that, that we say, oh, okay, we didn't understand that. That's all, I, I don't, I don't wanna rush in anything, I know it was important that, you know, but brought that up, so.
Do we need a motion on the ESG or no? Just bring it in for the next?
I think we should talk about them both, yeah. Don't rush them anything, that's good with you guys.
I'd say circulate a draft of the resolution.
Okay.
Good move.
Yep.
Good?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, number twenty-one is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up the microphone, state name, municipality for the record. A motion to open the public for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Carries. Rayanne, you wanna kick us off? Sorry, I think, but I have to call first, in case she wants to leave. She does a lot of work for us and I appreciate it. Give her one vacation. Well, there you go.
Rayanne Jerome, Hampshire Township, and Sussex County Employee. Um, so I have been working with some of the senior employees regarding health insurance. Lack of communication is the, um, we're running, running into. So today I followed up on many of my, um, people that I've been working with to see if they have heard anything, because this is what I did, I sent the emails to Anna, and with the email back, I will submit. The problem is, I don't know when she's submitting. Okay, so there's that. So, um, I did provide Ron and Christina the, um, email, um, the meeting, and from the time I submit, I believe it was, um, ten days that they are to receive a reimbursement. We have one that has already reached out almost a grand. Yeah. Um, so, for, for ten days. So now, the one I called today, I kind of pushed it to three, cause I, I can't trust that at the end of this week, they're gonna get their reimbursement. I'm not with them on, on the thirteenth, so when she said ten days from the time she submitted, I'm assuming Friday, they should be getting some kind of a check. So I said, listen, um, it's been submitted, let it go till next week, call me knowing anything. So that's where we're at. So, um, they're very frustrated, uh, they are getting their second bills for February and March.
Uh, that's my question.
Second bills are coming in. So I told them to hold on and not to pay.
That's what we were told, something that you didn't hear.
I wanted to just say something. The problem with that is, depends on the, who you're going, what doctor you're going to see, because some doctors will say, if you're not, if you owe us X number of dollars, they're not gonna see you. Um, and, and that's, you don't wanna run into that, cause, you know...
And unfortunately, they're all pretty shitty at the time of month. So I, I, I kept calling tomorrow, but I just, I hate to have to call tomorrow and be like, hey, and then just...
Well, at least she'll be here tomorrow, and she better be here tomorrow, um, and then maybe you can meet with her. Herb, if, if you can, if you pop in here tomorrow?
I'll probably...
I will probably pop in here at some point tomorrow between, uh, either before or in, in the middle when she's here.
I'll be around in the morning.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll pick her brain.
Now, I called all the people I've been working with and told them to say, hey, I am leaving tomorrow afternoon, and I return Tuesday after I go to the office. Um, so I just told them I'm following up on it, you know, just to, you know, button me to work on it. And they were, they were very appreciative, you know, we're working on it. So, um, and that's all I have right now, is just the lack of communication. I don't know.
One, one more quick thing with that. The couple that I dealt with that were out of state residents, uh, I had, I set the email chain up myself and copied Anna and them, so I was copying and everything, and they seemed to get resolved pretty quick that way. So maybe if we have some problem ones, maybe copy one of us, myself, I've been doing it, on the emails, so she knows we're aware, cause they were rectified rather quickly, once they knew that.
It's a shame that she's only rectifying it quickly when a commissioner's in the...
And that's, that's kinda...
As it gets.
Yeah, I mean, so, I'll, I'll be willing to do that, I'm sure...
I just don't know how much you want, like, how...
Yeah, but we gotta get them fixed. I mean, there were people here thirty-four, thirty-two years, they gave their life to this place, something has to be done.
One woman's not gonna get the medical treatment because she's afraid of the bills.
Right, you're right, the one guy wouldn't know.
That's a huge problem.
The husband wouldn't get the treatment.
Right. Huge problem.
So, that's what I'll do, and I'll also forward you all the email that I sent regarding the meeting that we had, uh, with her and all the things that she said. It's the same thing she said, you know, when she was here, um, that she's taking care of it, just email her, she'll submit it, that's fine, but follow up with these people, say, they, they're waiting for checks, they're waiting for like five to, you know, almost the hour.
Right, all right, well, well, again, the three of us will be here tomorrow, if not four, um, at different times and not together, uh, to, to talk.
Counselor shaking head and talk.
Counselor.
To talk, uh, to talk to her, and we'll see where we're getting, and if we have to go that route, Commissioner Hayden, we'll, we'll get C seat, everybody will get C seat on, if that helps, we'll do what we have to, that's it.
Where, where is she gonna be?
We really appreciate your help, thank you so much.
When Commissioner offices, she'll be on first.
Uh, is there anybody else?
I'm Ashley Green from Wantage, New Jersey, and I'm a representative from the Sussex Elks Lodge. Um, similar to what the Sussex Elks Lodge did in conjunction with the American Legion two years ago, where we brought the moving Vietnam Memorial to the county, the Sussex Elks Lodge is looking to bring another moving Vietnam, or another moving memorial to the county this September. This memorial is the National Memorial of Remembering Our Fallen. This memorial has, is a very different memorial. This memorial has only been in existence since September of twenty seventeen. It similarly travels the country, however, this is a photographic memorial, um, honoring our military fallen from the global war on terror. Um, this memorial also... She has a lot to say. Um, this memorial not only honors our fallen soldiers from overseas, but also our soldiers who succumb to invisible illnesses when they came home that served during that time. Um, so we are looking and asking our county commissioners for their support in bringing this in to the community, in the help of obviously getting this information out to our community, and your support once we have it here, coming to the events, just as we did with our Vietnam Memorial. We wanna make you aware that we are going to do it similar to the Vietnam Memorial, where it is being brought in within full motorcycle escort, um, two-day escort similarly as well, and we do intend to have a September eleventh memorial, cause we will have it during nine eleven.
One minute.
What was that?
One minute.
We will have it during nine eleven, or the evening of nine eleven, we intend to honor those veterans. It will be held at Woodburn Park in Wantage, um, near the World Trade Times deal. We hope to have it in the parking lot there, so that's the backdrop of the time. I will, I have information that I can give as any...
Absolutely. You can hand it to Christina right over here, and she'll, she'll hand it along. Unless any, anybody opposes it, I, I don't think anybody will have a problem with that.
Probably for each, or just one copy?
Just, I could...
We'll be, absolutely be there, and we appreciate what you're doing. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Sally Gibson, in Freedom. So I think it was about forty-five years ago when I got to be back to Sussex County, and I've been here all that time, working in the county. And one of the things that I did right away was, my mother was librarian, I had to get my library board with the new branch. I love the new branch, and that's what my three minutes are gonna be about. And I wanna ask for how to get in on the agenda, I'm sorry I don't remember any of that, and also whether I've missed, I don't get the paper anymore, I'm angry.
The Jersey word.
Yes, the Jersey word. So when I look at our system, our library system, I think it's fantastic. Now I'm up in Sussex a lot, so I use the Sussex Wantage branch, and I'm very jealous. So I know that we have renovations, and we've had the renovations for a long time, and been talking about the renovations for Newton. I know, I think I'm right, this is where I could get some of my information wrong, but I think we had a bond issue in twenty seventeen. I think we have an approval for renovations from twenty twenty-one. One of my concerns for that branch, of course, I know it's district, district, I use it all the time, our ADA stuff doesn't exist, we know, we do the best we can. I think we have to set aside, uh, which, from some of the money from when the homestead was sold. I, I had a rumor has come saying that we're gonna scrap the whole project. I don't believe that that's the direction, I hope I'm wrong. If we have to, I hope that we could continue to move towards at least renovations, if we have the money. There was another, um, grant, I think, uh, for, specifically for that library, that if we don't use it, we lose it. Again, I may be wrong. I'd, I'd like to see it become an agenda item, or if there's some kind of subcommittee, if there's anything I can do as a private citizen, I'd be happy to, going back to my history of my mother's librarian, and my first job , Dustin, and Shelby Brooks.
One minute.
I'd like to have us relook at the scope of the project, not give a, and I hope that I'm wrong, I'm hoping that I could get some clarification this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, John Snyder, San Francisco. The last night of our style and Tea Party meeting, we had a commissioner from Warren County speak, and he mentioned that they have zero debt from Warren County. I'm just wondering, do we have it here, or do we have it there? Like on a national level...
If, if I can, I'll just make a comment, only because we're having a workshop, so you're more than, you know, you can sit here and, and listen to our workshop, we might be here all night, but, uh, we have not fast a budget, so I, we can't, I can't even comment to, to that.
I'm just wondering, have we accumulated debt over the years?
We always, we always have debt.
We have, let me, let me just suggest, we have a debt reduction program that started many years ago, and what that, that program reduces the cost of bonding over a period of years. And so the county bond, did a lot of bonding over the years, and what the board did was back in, what was it, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, adopted a program by which we now reduce by percentage rate so much of the bonding that I do, so that we do, will be at that point that Warren County is at. We are not there, but, and it's a long term. I mean, it's not that this board went out and said, we're gonna continue to bond. Previous boards, they bonded, that was the way of America. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen, the board looked and said, we're gonna develop a debt reduction program, and that's what happened. So yes, we have debt, but there is a program, and it's gonna take many years to get that debt reduced.
On a national level, when you hear the president say, uh, the, he's reducing the deficit, which is baloney, there is only one deficit for one year, but the next year there's another deficit. You're not reducing, you're either having a higher deficit or a lower deficit, but you're contributing to the debt.
County's very...
So, just hold on, just hold on a second, cause we're getting carried away with, we're, we're not here for Q and A, no disrespect to you, John.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We're here for commentary. I just wanted to make a point that if you wanna stay, we're more than happy to have you for our workshop, too. And maybe that might answer your question. I just, it, it, this isn't, you know, I didn't answer that woman's questions, you know, I can't do, we can't do it for him and her, you know what I'm saying? So, we appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner, I apologize, Commissioner.
That's right. Uh, anybody else? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment, return to regular business?
Make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. All right. Number twenty-two, reminders, please check the county's website, www.sussex nj.us, uh, for meeting schedules. Number twenty-three, executive session, we have no executive session. That is a score, but like I said previously, we do have a workshop on, on a budget, you guys are more than welcome to stay if you'd like. I do not know how long we're gonna be here for. I, uh, I have dinner ordered if need be. Um, but anyway, thank you so much. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Meeting is adjourned at seven-ten.